I'm gonna try to do some line striping on Thursday. This is the weather it's supposed to be. Yeah.
One block. It's coming, it's coming.
No, no.
Okay, okay, that's okay. Okay, all right. How you doing, Bill?
Welcome everyone to the Township Council meeting Monday, October 29, 2018. This meeting is now called to order. Mr. Victor Dipadova, would you approach the podium and lead us in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of reflection and respect for our profound sadness over the cruel and inexpectable murder of 11 lives at the Tree of Life Synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania this past Saturday. We stand for our pledge allegiance. We are also standing for our constitutional rights. Our First Amendment gives us the right of the people to peaceful assembly for religion. This should never be taken away or forgotten. We mourn the tragic loss of lives and our deepest sympathies go out to the victims and their families. Mrs. Kraus, can you please call, read the statement of public notice?
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. A notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January 2, 2018. A copy of notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the Township Clerk on said date.
Mrs. Kraus, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Present.
Councilmember Leese?
Here, present.
Councilmember Seber?
Present.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Present.
Council President Scobha?
Present.
Have a motion, a second to approve the minutes.
移到移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移移 The Little Falls EMT Scott and Sergio rendered necessary assistance and graciously transported me to Mountainside Hospital's ER for tests and treatment. I and my family are extremely grateful for the professionalism and caring of all those involved, both paid and volunteer. I served for many years as a Cedar Grove fireman. Unfortunately, the name of the young man who first looked after me was unavailable, so I am unable to convey my appreciation to him directly, but will always remember his kindness. With kind regards for all those involved, James Boltieri from North Caldwell. It was a nice letter to thank our EMT as well as the Clifton Police. Now, in terms of my report, I did want to mention that, I've talked about it a few times, about the light application that we've been working on for Wilmore Road, Francisco, as well as Cedar Grove Road. I'm pleased to report that Corporal Mancato has submitted the necessary paperwork to the county traffic engineer, which is now under his review, and the next steps are to present his recommendation to the county Board of Chosens Freeholders, as this will then be put on an agenda for eventual review and approval hopefully of that. So, just want to thank Corporal Mancato, as well as the Transportation Committee for helping, you know, make this happen. Now that it's in a good place, it's in the hands of the county. One other note that I want to touch on is, a couple weeks ago, we actually met the first meeting of the three-town, Totowa, Wildon Park, and Little Falls Flood Board. We came together here in these chambers to discuss this new committee and what our plan was to address not only the Passaic River, but also the Peckman River. So, we met for about an hour and 15 minutes, and through the process, you know, we had to pick a chair, a vice chair, as well as a secretary. So, Mayor Keith Kazmark from Wildon Park will serve as a chair. The vice chair will be Bill Buker, Councilman from Totowa, and the secretary will be Little Falls' Dorothy O'Hare. Our next steps are just coordinating a few items with FEMA, because we'd like to sit down with them to go over some of our concerns and how we can address the Peckman, as well as the Passaic River moving forward. We're hoping to meet on a monthly basis, we're gonna work that through, but, you know, it's the start of something, it's finally nice to have this committee together. I know it's been something that the mayor worked on with the mayors from Totowa and Wildon Park this past year. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Vancheri. Councilman Leese?
Well, my comments tonight, what we had last Friday, we had the Harvest Moon Dinner Dance for seniors in town. It was an event that people liked, since one we had before, but nothing as strong as well as it was last Friday. It's something that people need to have in town, and people enjoyed very much, and I feel in the future we can have that and expand other things similar to it. But it was a great night, and something that people fully enjoyed, and that's what this was all about. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cordero?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Well, I want to thank Councilman Leese and the Senior Advisory Committee, and I see Phyllis Dillon sitting out there, and my friend Joan. They did a fantastic job. It's, you know, it's a big effort to organize this, and it's, you know, a big dinner from, you know, catered, and there's music and dancing, and I gotta tell ya, I had a great time. The seniors had a great time. I can't tell you the countless number of guests that came to the event that came over to tell me just how wonderful a time they had. So, it's great to see our town do something like that again. So, thank you, thank you, Councilman Leese.
Great dancer.
I am actually a senior, truth, you know, truth be told. Also, we had an incredible weekend of events that myself and the council and mayor attended, and that's another phenomenal part about Little Falls. So, we started with the Senior Advisory Harvest Moon Dance. Little Falls Education Association had a great event, and, you know, they raise a lot of money that they give to the schools. In particular, they've just donated a tremendous amount of money to help open the steam lab in School One. Then on Saturday was the Halloween Bash at the Rec Center. That was really hysterical. There were so many kids. Mr. Pace and his staff did a phenomenal job. Little Falls Business Association was there with giveaways and information. The kids had a great time. It was really wonderful to see. And the weekend rounded out with Engine Company Number Two doing their beer mug event, and it was great to see, at Maggie's, it was great to see so many residents come out and support our Little Falls Volunteer Fire Department, because we know how important they are to our community. And lastly, on the Open Space Committee, we had a meeting on the 16th. I want to thank our members who attended and contributed so much to the meeting. Thank you, Ray, for being there and contributing. One of our overarching discussions was the need to look at our parks and recreation and see how we can upgrade and expand in order to answer our changing demographics in our town. We are getting a lot of new families with young kids moving into town, or people staying in town and raising families, and so we need to have even more playgrounds and recreation opportunities for them. At the same time, we're also seeing empty nesters moving here from surrounding communities that have higher tax rates, or don't offer some downsizing options like we've started to be able to offer. And so, we really need to address that and expand our parks and our recreation and our playgrounds. And so, that's a, that will be a big thrust of what we want to do in the coming year or two. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cordero. Councilwoman Seber?
Thank you. So, yes, I want to also thank Councilman Leese for the Harvest Moon Dance. It was really an honor to be able to go and serve and partake in the festivities. It was really a wonderful time and a great community outreach, so thank you very much for all that you do with that event. I did also want to just reflect on some additional activities passed and forward that we have happening. So, a big appreciation to PTA School 2-3 for their trunk-or-treat, which was a great success for their, for the town children. The Halloween Bash was very well attended. It was a rainy day, which I think even brought additional children in, since a lot of the sports practices have gotten canceled. So, it was a very well-attended tent, event, as well as really being able to focus on our local businesses. We had local businesses such as Two Sweet and Pencil Works there. So, again, another great community outreach. Also, we have tomorrow night, we have our Halloween Dance for the 7th and 8th graders happening. And then, with all these great festivities at the end of the season, we have to remind ourselves all that, just kind of a plea to safety, that it is Halloween on Wednesday, and we need to make sure that we are safe, we keep our children safe. So, please make sure you urge everybody to drive slowly, be cognizant of everything that's around them, and, you know, be cautious as much as they can. Thank you.
Mr. Fernandez, you asked a question at the last meeting on what our expenses are for the elevators in this building, and we spend $1,500 a year in this municipal complex maintaining our elevators. Mayor James Belford-Damian?
Thank you, Council President. There are a number of things that I just want to touch upon tonight, the very first of which is something that I have mentioned. It started being mentioned in August and was delayed a bit, but it is the Town Hall Forum that I am looking to host to address any and all concerns that residents may have in a far more relaxed setting. I'll tell you, as an aside, I don't plan on wearing a suit that night, so hopefully we'll be able to have some just discussion about things happening here in town. Because Thanksgiving is the, I guess, third full week in November, I might be looking towards the last week in November. At the next meeting, I'll confirm an absolute date certain that we will be holding that. I just need to confirm that the Civic Center is available that evening, and we'll have a little bit of a Town Hall there, hopefully the last week in November. Next, I am pleased to report that I met Mr. Simone over at Wilmore Park last week. The lights, the light installation is moving swimmingly. All of the conduits have been run, all of the wiring has been run. We are now just waiting on the delivery of the lamp poles themselves. We can then have those installed in Wilmore Park to light it up a little bit more as dusk comes around. Hopefully, all of the poles will be in time this year for our holiday tree lighting, which we hope to, again, have lit up well with all of these new lights. Next, the Harvest Moon Dinner Dance led by Councilman Leese was an outstanding event this year. Councilman, you could throw one heck of a party. You had a whole lot of friends there. It was an outstanding event, and it was great to see all of our seniors up and dancing around. They put me to shame, I don't think I have the energy that most of them do, but it was great to be there. As Council President indicated, our hearts are certainly with all of those who were affected by the terrible tragedy that occurred this weekend in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Just an absolutely horrific event that there is absolutely no room for in this country. And our hearts are with all of those that were affected, and it's, again, something that you hope and pray never happens in your community, but it became an unfortunate event this weekend, and our thoughts are with them there. Finally, I hope everyone has a safe, happy, and when I say healthy Halloween, I mean nobody gets sick off of too much candy, and all of the kids have a great time in town. We're looking forward to our annual holiday, our Halloween Holiday Bash down in the middle of town that is somewhat impromptu, but seems to come together every single year. So, just everyone, as Councilwoman Seber said, be vigilant, keep your eyes open, especially this Wednesday evening. There's gonna be a lot of little kids around the streets here in Little Falls, so just please be safe. That said, that's all that I have this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a motion, a second to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only?
移到
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes, however, if appropriate, may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President.
The floor is open. Good evening.
Al Atenee C. 27 Dewey Avenue, Little Falls. Inasmuch as the agenda for this evening's meeting involves taxes, both taxes and bond issues, I would like to ask the following questions or, and/or make the following statements. In information that has been disseminated to the residents of this town over the past few weeks, including an ad in the New Jersey, Little Falls Magazine, residents were informed that by dint of the hard work on the part of this administration, that we were going to be seeing a tax decrease in our property taxes. In reality, I do not, I firmly do not believe that this reduction for which you're taking credit is as a result of work done on your part, but because, as you know, that decrease is directly related to two factors. And those two factors are a decrease in our share of county taxes and a decrease in our share of the taxes paid to Passaic Valley High School. Now, these are two factors that we've been told time and time again, and I fully agree, that this council, this administration, has absolutely no control over. In reality, if you look at strictly municipal taxes, something which is well within the purview of this administration, you will see we actually had a 2% increase in taxes. On the other issue, the bonds, this information that had been forwarded to the residents of our town indicated that, again, you were able to save us 400, you've reduced our debt service by $400,000. Well, I don't know if that's exactly true, because the only way you came up with that number is that in 2017, you paid, meaning the town, $500,000 less in principal payments for that particular year than in, more, less than in 216, and you paid more than $100,000 in interest. So, I have, I'd like your response on two issues. How can you claim a tax reduction when you had no control over it? And how can you say that this paying, not paying 500, or paying $500,000 less in principal, and yet, at the same time, paying $100,000 more in interest is beneficial to the town?
Thank you for your questions. Just to clarify, the ad was not an ad, Mr. Atenees, it was, in that paper, there was a letter from the mayor, and then there was an editorial that I was interviewed. There was a political ad, but are you referring to the editorial?
I'm referring to the information in itself and the vehicle by which it was transmitted to the residents.
Fine. Mayor, would you like to respond to the question of, Mr. Atenees, that he feels that the taxes, this governing body was not responsible for the taxes going down?
Sure. Mr. Atenees, I believe in no shape or form did any statement that was sent out or written by me indicate that this municipal council decreased taxes. In fact, when I presented my budget earlier this year, I made it abundantly clear that the average home would increase in taxes by $55 to, in an average home in the municipality. What my letter simply said was that I was pleased to announce that residents would see a tax decrease this year. So, in no way did I indicate that it was the municipal portion. You're absolutely correct, there were two portions that did have a decrease, both the Passaic Valley share and the county share, which resulted in an overall tax decrease by about two points to homeowners here in Little Falls. That was part one of your question.
For your second part, Mr. Atenees, you want to get clarification of the $400,000?
Excuse me?
Yes.
But in the information that was disseminated to the town, and I don't, I don't want to be held, I don't want the discussion to be held only to what is contained in the Little, or was contained in the Little Falls Magazine. The language used makes it appear as if you're taking full credit for that reduction in property taxes, which in fact, it is not. You, as you just said, you're not taking credit for it, of course you can't. Is that correct? Yes? No?
Mr. Atenees, the taxes went down, that was the verbiage that was used. You want to be specific to the language that you want to tell this governing body?
Well, I just want, I just want it known that the decrease in our property taxes was completely unrelated to any activities taken on the part of this administration. Would you agree with that statement?
No. Mr. Atenees, when the mayor told you that, we're not saying that, you're saying that.
Excuse me?
We did not say that, sir.
Do you agree that?
The taxes went down for those two entities, that is.
I'm not asking for you to put it in print.
That is correct.
All I'm asking is, do you agree?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, fine.
But we're talking about language, and I think that's the difference.
Language is a very strong vehicle.
Well, it's interpretation, sir.
And there are certain words you can use to have it interpreted the way that benefits you the most, and we all do. I'm sorry.
The second part of your question, $400,000?
Correct.
Right. Mayor, would you like to clarify? Mr. Atenees is concerned about the $400,000 on how it's stated?
Absolutely. There was, in fact, $400,000 less in debt that the municipality had this year as a result of a number of things. One of them was, as you indicated, some principal was paid off, there was refinancing of bonds, and, and, and yes, there was about $400,000 of reduced debt that was being paid this year because the municipality incurred less debt over the past several years. So, so yes, there is certainly a decrease in debt now than prior than there were two years ago.
And a decrease in debt payment as well, because you didn't pay, you paid $500,000 less towards the principal?
Because there was less debt.
Okay.
Are you?
What about the additional $100,000 in interest?
That's just the general, it's based upon mark, absolutely, there's always interest paid on bonds that are secured. It's just by nature, by virtue of the bond.
I'm not a bond expert, but, you know, the only kind of thing that I've ever been involved in is as a homeowner paying down my mortgage. And, and if I'm incorrect, I want somebody to tell me about it, you know, enlighten me. If I have an opportunity to pay more towards my principal, I think it behooves me, as the mortgagee, to do so, because I'm not, I will then have completed my obligation towards that principal in less time. Does the, does the same hold true with the reduction in payment from $500,000?
No, it is very different. A municipality is, operates under the premise that it will be required to operate in perpetuity. So, with that reasoning, for example, when I, when, we'll compare it to a mortgage. When a mortgage is being paid, paying down interest, there is an end in sight, meaning at the end of 30 years, 20 years, 15 years, whatever that term is, a mortgage will eventually be paid off, and then whatever happens, happens. The difference with a municipality is this. A municipality is required to essentially continue to refinance, and as debt is paid, incur new debt, because there are continuing expenses that occur year after year for a municipality, whether it be improvements to a park, whether it be the purchasing of a fire truck, whether it be different vehicles that the municipality must buy. So, the amount, the principal a municipality has essentially remains somewhat static, and the intent is to slowly pay that down, with the understanding that additional debt will be incurred the following year. And it is, it is unfortunately very different than the way a general household could run in that it is almost undisputed that debt will need to be incurred, if not next year, the following year, or the following year. So, paying down principal also puts the burden on the current homeowner in the town, although the life of the purchase may span far more than that year. So, for example, the purchase of a fire truck. The reason a fire truck is bonded is because, A, municipalities typically don't have the cash on hand to purchase them. That aside, it would be unreasonable to pay for a fire truck today, considering the low interest rates that we're able to secure on the municipal side, because that fire truck will be in use for approximately 20 years hypothetically. It's unreasonable to require you, as the current resident of your address, to pay for that fire truck in full today, because hypothetically, you could sell your home and move out tomorrow, and really, that taxpayer and that new homeowner should pay for the vehicle that the municipality is using for those remaining 19 years of its service.
So, in effect, what you, what it sounds like to me, I understand where you're coming from about additional debt being incurred on the part of the municipality just, just to run business. I understand that. But it seems to me that what you're doing is, you're postponing paying that debt, while I, right now, may benefit from it, since that, that principal is extended to a certain amount by $500,000, it's then going to be the responsibility of my children to eat that up. Is that, is that a fair statement?
No, because we refinance bonds to ensure we get the lowest rates, which happens every several years. And I will tell you that Mr. Coochie is far more of an expert on bonds than I am, so I'm gonna turn the microphone over to him for one minute to further explain the reasoning.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Atenees, the reason that we do not have the ability to do what you suggest with regard to mortgages is because we have these things called bond covenants. So, these are instruments that are sold on the open market. So, when we covenant, covenant, have a covenant to pay bonds over 10 years, we are required to pay those bonds over 10 years, because we have people investing in them. This becomes part of the SEC and the due diligence that we have to do. Now, there are, sometimes you'll see bonds that have call features, that say, after so many years, we can call the bonds, we can pay them all off. But the rates have been so low that call features have not been in place in a lot of bonds at this point in time. Usually, when they're high and you see rates go down, is when you want to call, call the bond, because then you save money. You follow, if you've ever invested in a municipal bond, you'll know that, you're guaranteed the term of that bond. We can't pay it off early.
I, 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 I kinda get your drift, Chuck, okay? But I, now, in this particular situation, this reduction in principal payment was due specifically to the facts you just mentioned?
Yes, because we paid less because we had less to pay. We had less requirement to pay.
Less of a requirement?
Right, because we pay, we're paying off.
You owe that 500?
No, we, we owe, we owe, we owe much more than 500, but the principal payment on an annual basis is less, because we owe less than we did in the prior year.
It's, it's rather confusing to me, but I thank you for taking the time to try to enlighten.
Well, Mr. Atenees, let's unconfuse you if you want to re-ask these questions. I mean, they're important, because we're not here to push anyone out.
No, no, I understand that. No, no, I understand that, and I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the, the explanations of sorts that I've received. I, I don't think I'm, I'm qualified enough from a financial standpoint. There's no getting around the way of, of the tax decrease not being something that, that you made happen. I mean, we all agree on that. We all agree. You didn't make that happen. The bond situation, because I am not knowledgeable enough, I can't make counterpoints, and that's why I'm bringing up the issues as I am.
Mr. Atanes, I think in the best layman's terms to explain it is, we've paid off more debt than we've taken on.
And now, my next little caveat is, and I hope you don't incur too much more.
All right, we agree with you, Mr. Atanes. The floor is open.
Louis Fernandez, 54 Harrison Street. I was going to talk about the same thing, but you beat me to it. And I even brought a few things, the magazine that you claimed, the tax decrease, also the letter that came with the taxes, where, I mean, I'm not an expert in, but it seems like you, you guys are taking credit for it. Or at least, that's the point that you want to bring across to the public. Even the flyers that you send, they indicate that. But anyway, we're, we're going to leave it at that. What I want to talk about now, since Mr. Atanes took most of the questions, is about, I see ordinance 1336. I was here about, I think it was about two weeks ago, maybe a month ago, time flies, and I expressed my dissatisfaction, my opposition towards this, because, like I said, the township is buying a parking lot, basically a property on Stanley Street for, to use as a parking lot, I believe, and nothing has been done still, even though you claim that you do a lot of things for the residents of Jackson Park, nothing has been done. In fact, and I, if I recall, I'm going to show you something. One of the things that, I, I remember when you were running for, do you remember these? November 4th, 2014, quite a few years. I saved them, by the way, I don't know why. But it says that one of the, one, one of the things that you, you claimed that you were going to do was to stop avoiding flood, flooding issues. Well, how can you avoid flooding issues if you haven't done anything? In fact, you spend money everywhere else but in flooding. The residents of, of Jackson Park, we haven't seen, and I said it the other day, we haven't seen a bag of sand put in there. However, we have money to spend $375,000 in other issues that they are really irrelevant. I go around, sometimes I walk around the, the neighborhood, and I see people, you know, old timers, newcomers, and I ask them, what do they think of the flooding and the Peckman River? And whether or not you have, you forgot us. And most of them, they think they did, he did, because, like I said, nothing is being done from 2014. We go every few years through flooding. Cleaning the river is not going to solve the problem. You claim that you spent, I don't know how many thousands of dollars in police overtime, in this overtime, in the other overtime. Well, we would love for you to spend the money before things happen, not after the fact. After the fact, it's done. We have the waters, we have water in the basement. Spend the money before the flooding. Take care of the problem before then. But nothing is being done. Like I said, I go around, and most people think that you forgot that, that part of town. Others, they claim other things that I shouldn't be saying because it involves you having a preference towards a certain realty that has no homes in that area, and, you know, so forth and so forth. So, there is a few theories out there. But overall, the theory and the idea of the people of the residents of Jackson Park is that you don't give a damn about the, the Peckman River.
Mr. Fernandez, you can stay there, Mr. Fernandez. Well, I can't address you. Sir, before I came to the council meeting, I was at a fundraiser for a particular family in the Jackson Park area that, their, their home was very devastated from the flood. If, if they were here, I think they would contradict a lot of things you were saying. You used the words "we." Are you representing the Jackson Park area?
No, but are you representing all of them? When you went to a...
Yes, we represent everybody, sir.
No, you're not, because you're not representing me.
So, calm down.
And I have no opinion...
You used the word "we," and you said "we." Are you representing the entire Jackson Park area?
Not the entire.
Okay, thank you.
But neither are you.
Yes, I do, sir.
No, you're not.
Yes, I do.
No, you're not.
Yes. Listen, you used, used the word "irrelevant." To you, it's irrelevant, but to certain issues, they're relevant when people come up to us and ask us about parking and other situations. So, I just want to make you know that we talk to many people, and the benefit of the entire town, you may not like the idea of the parking lot, and we respect that, but there's many people that have suggested and wanted it. Now, having said that, calm down. Having said that, Mayor, would you like to address the comments that he was making to you?
Sure. So, with respect to ordinance 1336, I'm not going to regurgitate all of the information I provided at the prior meeting when this was discussed, but downtown parking has been one of the major concerns that has been expressed townwide by residents in all sections of town, including Jackson Park. That said, again, I...
Jackson Park, excuse me, I didn't mean to. Jackson Park asked you to build a parking lot on Stanley Street?
Residents in Jackson Park have expressed issues with parking in downtown and the lack thereof. So, yes.
But they also have expressed issues and problems with the flooding in Jackson Park?
I'm getting to that, and I would also love to hear the remainder of the conspiracy theories. I'm happy to sit down at some point and, and hear them all out.
Okay.
So, I will absolutely, I'm willing to do that anytime. With respect to nothing being done for Jackson Park, unfortunately, again, this is something that I feel like was, I'm going to be on repeat from a prior meeting, so I apologize to anyone who is going to be hearing this for a third or fourth time.
Second time, second.
But there have been a number of things, and one of the things that I did mention was absolutely trying to address flooding in town. You're absolutely correct. In doing that, as I've indicated on a number of occasions, the municipality is currently in the process of diligently finalizing and pursuing a TRACO to address the flooding that occurs in the Peckman River. You said there's, cleaning the river does nothing. I believe every expert in the field would disagree with that statement. I believe keeping a river clean of debris, keeping a river clean and running deeper and cleaner certainly helps avoid flooding. So, I would disagree with that statement. We, as you indicated, after a flood, it, it is too late. You're absolutely right. And that's why we're pursuing this TRACO. We're pursuing it so that the river can be cleaned on a regular basis, so that the potential for banks, the, the banks becoming unstable is reduced. And to say nothing is being done, we are frequently in communication with the Army Corps of Engineers. Bank stabilization is one of their main priorities in alleviating future floods along this river. Almost all of the floods that have occurred in this river have been a result of damming of one of our bridges, or all of our bridges, or multiple bridges. All of that comes back to the bank stabilization. Because the banks are not stable, trees and other big debris is eroded away and blocks up our bridges. Keeping it clean with the TRACO in the future, working with the Army Corps to stabilize the banks further, is something that I am proactively doing to attempt to prevent future flooding. So, to sit here and say, nothing is being done, and that you're forgotten about, I can tell you that as recently as today, I was on the telephone discussing the TRACO and discussing issues with the Army Corps of Engineers. So, to say you're forgotten about, while I may not have relayed to you today that I was on the phone regarding these issues, is a complete misstatement.
But, Mayor, if it rains tomorrow, if we have a torrential rain tomorrow, we are in the same situation as we were back in August 11.
Untrue. The river has had, I don't know exactly the number of yards of sand, rock, and debris removed since that storm, but I would venture to say it's in the hundreds of yards of material have been moved from the river, which means the river is now running deeper, which means the likelihood of the banks being eroded is lower, which means the likelihood of flooding is much lower. So, to say we're in the same spot is also incorrect. The, if you look at all of the, what are the big areas called, Phil?
The Shoals.
The Shoals. And a number of our shoals have been eliminated and/or greatly reduced and moved to the sides, which also assists in some of the bank stabilization. So, again, we're not in the same place that we were then. This is something that unfortunately, because the pursuit of the TRACO is taking so long, wasn't done before. I don't know that that would have necessarily solved the problem and that nobody would have gotten a drop of water had that occurred before. I can't say that. I do know that five inches of rain in 50 minutes is unprecedented. I know that five inches of rain in 50 minutes is nothing that anywhere in, maybe the entire country, or maybe even the world, that, I take that back. I'm sure somewhere in the, in the world, it is engineered for that. But nowhere in this part of the country, or maybe anywhere in this country, are we engineered to take five inches of water in a 50-minute period.
Okay. That it?
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any other questions, because even, even if I do, I'm not going to answer them.
You can, sir.
Because you're going to, you're going to give me the, the BS all the way around that you, you know, how much you care about that. And, and we feel that nothing is being done.
Does the council have any questions or comments for Mr. Fernandez? Mr. Fernandez, you asked the questions, so...
Even if you ask the questions, I'm not going to answer.
The floor is open.
We know the answer's okay.
Don Radcliffe, 239 Long Hill Road.
Good evening.
I have to take exception to your response to Ms. Atanes's thing relative to the bond. I mean, clearly, clearly, in one of your ads, you discuss that you saved taxpayers $400,000. In no way did you save taxpayers five cents. Basically, you paid $100,000 more in interest in 2017 than 2016. Now, by not paying principal on certain notes and debts, it looks like there was a $400,000 less expenditure made during that year in the budget. But that clearly isn't accurate. And, and clearly, you couldn't have paid down more debt, because why would you pay more interest, $100,000 more interest, if in fact, you had a lower debt balance? And I think there's some confusion between the, the notes and the bonds. And yes, the bonds were lower in 17 than 16, but the notes were not. And I know you wait because the, the notes, you're paying 2.5% interest on because they're short-term debt, and you wait to roll them into a long-term debt and where it will cost more money. But I just, I have to take exception to your response.
Mayor?
The easy answer is the, the interest rate has increased.
Not in 2017.
2018.
Yeah, but it's 2017 we're comparing to 2016, the last two audited financial statements.
Right, we're, we're, I mean, I'm referring to 2018, so, sir, 2016, 17 may be true.
You saved $400,000 of taxpayer money, when in fact, there was no money saved.
No, there was a great reduction in amount, in, in total amount owed between 17 and 2018.
I don't believe that's true.
The floor is open. Seeing no one else come forward, can I have a motion to close the public comment?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Kraus, you have that?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, can you please read ordinance 1336?
Sure. Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1336, an ordinance entitled, Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Acquisition of Real Property for Municipal Purposes in Buy and For the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $375,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Can I have a motion in a second to open to public hearing on ordinance 1336?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to close to the public hearing on ordinance 1336?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance 1336?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, you have to read the, the call card, please.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, read ordinance 1337.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1337, an ordinance entitled, Bond Ordinance to Amend Sections 4 and 10 of the Bond Ordinance, ordinance number 1326, entitled, Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of a Public Improvement in the Acquisition of New Automotive Vehicles, Including Original Apparatus and Equipment, in Buy and For the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $445,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds adopted April 23, 2018.
Can I have a motion in a second to open to public hearing on ordinance 1337?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to close to the public hearing on ordinance 1337?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Can I have a second, can I have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance 1337?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, read ordinance 1338.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1338, an ordinance entitled, Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending the Township Code, Chapter 7, entitled, Traffic with a Second Reading and Public Hearing, Scheduled for November 26, 2018.
Can I have a motion in a second to open to public comment for, I'm sorry, where are we? Yep, yeah, it's just introduced, right? Can I have a motion in a second to introduce 1338?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus?
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Can I have a motion in a second to open to public comment for general matters only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes, however appropriate. You may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President.
The floor is open.
Al Atanesi, 27 Dewey Avenue, Little Falls. Just a point of clarification, please, regarding ordinance 1336. For the acquisition of real property for municipal purposes, where is that property? And what piece of, what parcel of land are we speaking about?
We could give the address, huh? Yep, we could give the address, absolutely. Mayor?
It's 5658 Stanley.
5658 Stanley.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Atanes?
No.
It's okay, you don't have to say sorry. Anyone else like to come forward?
Hi, Eva Ferris, 50 Lincoln Avenue.
Good evening.
Just out of curiosity, why is the address not listed for the ordinance there?
Counselors, is there a reason why we don't list an address?
This is prepared by bond counsel.
And...
By block and lot.
All property sales are done by block and lot.
But in the past, though, the address has been listed. For example, like just in terms of being transparent to residents, you know, it's very easy for this to slip by. Somebody might not be interested in this, but if they live nearby it, they'd be like, oh, I better attend this meeting. But since there's no address, you know, there's very little chance that they might do that.
So the address was included for the workshop meeting where it was for discussion.
Okay.
However, both of the readings of the ordinance itself, as I indicated, property sale is done by block and lot number.
So, and just to piggyback on clarification, and I think we discussed this at a prior meeting, but this is for the bond to obtain the funding to purchase the property. It's not actual...
Because it's already decided, right?
It's not, it's not for the purchase of the property, it's for the, to actually authorize the sale of bonds. So that's why it's written this way.
Okay. And just, I'm not sure if this was already discussed, but how do you determine how much you're going to purchase the property for if it's not, because I believe it's not on the market. So how, how does that?
How did we derive? To the figure of $375,000? Is that your question this evening?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Mayor?
So the purchase price is not $375,000, it's actually less than that. But the price was reached on just a negotiated sale.
So if it's less than the $375,000?
Correct. We're bonding in excess so that we can cover any other costs that are incurred for purposes of closings.
So what are you purchasing it for, then? What's the price?
Was it three?
I don't, I don't recall the number, but it's a fair market value based on homes in the area. I think it's 350.
355?
It's around, it's around that cost. Obviously, the township encourages cost for these surveys and environmental and reviews like that in order to ensure that we're not, you know, that we're in full compliance with all laws.
And has the owner agreed to sell the property? Do you have like a deal on the table?
Yes, it's a contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no else come forward, can I have a motion and a second to close the public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay. This meeting is now closed.